Good. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling to order the Tuesday, November 13th Cohasset Board of Sleutman meeting at 7:30 PM. Sleutman Dahmer is not able to join us, but I know Sleutman Schubert is on his way. And we do a roll call, starting with Kevin.
Kevin McCarthy here.
Brian Kennedy here.
Jack and Eily here.
Okay. And if everybody would like to join us for the pledge of allegiance. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anybody here for public comment for items not on the agenda? Everybody else is here for items on the agenda. Okay. We will start with a one-day liquor license for social arts center. So I put a note on your agenda that they called her today and they're canceling that date. Okay. All right, got it. Sorry. You did write it right there in front of me. Okay. Next up is an entertainment license for Bia Bistro. Does somebody hear from Bia Bistro?
I am, yes.
If you don't mind coming up.
No, sit here.
Yep, please sit there. Introduce yourself, your address, and let us know what you're looking for.
Okay. My name's Tom Hoadley. I manage at Bia Bistro and other restaurants that Brian Houlihan owns, but mostly under six days a week.
Okay.
The address of the business is 35 South Main. We're hoping to get a Monday through Sunday license for acoustic musics inside and outside that will have sound support, meaning amplification for the acoustic instruments and the vocals. Mostly be used for brunches and the occasional three-day weekend, maybe on a Monday as well, but it's meant to just improve our brunches on the outside on the patio that we recently built and hopefully indoors as well during this type of weather.
Okay. It's Brian. Brian, right?
Brian Houlihan, yeah.
How you doing?
I'm Tom Hoadley, I'm sorry, but Brian Houlihan.
Kelly McCarthy.
Yes.
And I'm Reece Hughes. My daughter works for you folks.
Okay, great.
So we can't.
Well, here's what I would recommend.
Okay.
You could do it. This is one of those moments of motion of necessity things.
Yeah.
Because if you don't vote, there's no form and you can't move it.
Right.
So is this something you want to get done right away or can wait one more week?
We're hoping to get it done and start having acoustic music this Sunday at 5:00.
So I do know that Paul Schubert has given it. If not, in the doorway.
Reece, 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 you're something.
Yeah.
There's no motion of necessity, that's.
Right, there we go.
He was kind of looking forward to it.
I just got, I'm sorry.
Carrie Anne.
Carrie Anne, oh, Carrie Anne.
So Paul.
If there's a comment, I can't because she works.
I'm five steps ahead of you.
I'm up for the cupcake.
I know.
Tom Hoadley is here representing Bia Bistro.
Oh, good.
They are seeking a Monday through Sunday, so seven day a week, entertainment license for acoustic music and amplification for Bia Bistro. So I have some questions. Do you have any questions?
I do. You know, I'm a little bit concerned about amplified music outside.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that's going to fly with the neighbors. My guess is, I don't know. I mean, I'm just opening it up as an issue. I have no problem inside. I have no problem acoustic unamplified outside.
Okay. When I say amplified, just to clarify, amplified, yes, that sounds much louder and for more rocking perhaps than I mean it. It's just most instruments these days just get a clearer signal when you plug them into something and then have speakers to support them.
Right.
The vocals as well. It actually allows you to control the volume and be more quiet when you can spread the speakers out far, you know, farther away from where the person is actually singing. So instead of having to project an entire patio, you could instead have speakers placed tastefully around and have a person singing appropriate volumes and just reproduce the sound with those types of amplifications. It's not to make it into some sort of, you know, rock concert.
No, and I, you know.
Be more tasteful and more.
I get that. I just, I still think there's going to be an issue around amplified music. Tell me this, this entertainment license runs, what's the timeframe daily?
Well, yeah, what's the timing or time?
Well, we were envisioning it as something that is mostly for brunches. That's how we envision it. At other restaurants we have that are open up such as Galley Kitchen and Bar, we always shut the door at 10 o'clock and end the music at that time. Here we were thinking not nearly as late as that. It's mostly just a daytime license that we're hoping to get. There could be an occasion. We'd like to have the widest breadth of usage possible for those rare occasions that we have a three-day weekend and perhaps we're trying to do something on a Sunday night a little bit later than we normally would.
Right.
But we're hoping, you know, the brunches are our largest concern. Just hoping to get that done.
Chris, if we were to give them an entertainment license tonight, what would the annual, would it just be through? Because we are in the process of, we renew all of our licenses, both liquor licenses and entertainment licenses.
Yeah, this was just something I wanted to do the year because you haven't approved the one for next year yet.
Right. This would only go through January.
Did speak with, I believe her name's Jen downstairs.
Yep.
Is that right? And she gave me a breakdown that it's a $25 fee, a $75 fee, and either 100 or 50 and 50, but total $200 annually, and that this would only cover us till the end of the year and then we'd have to do it again in January.
Right.
Which, talking to the owner, he's prepared to do that if that's what it takes to do.
The trick is, right, I share Jack's concern and we have a number of businesses in town that we have restricted any kind of outside music or amplification because where do you draw the line? You know, do you start, you know, we want to have a classical guitarist. What does that mean? You, you know, we're not going to use amplified music, but what if you have a brass band? So there's all these kind of nuances that's really hard for us to, you know, set parameters to.
I see.
So I am concerned with the outside music just because that has been kind of how we have approached this in the past. The second thing is, this is really only good through the end of December and there would be an application process presumably for, you know, the calendar 2019 year that we would again be hearing in a couple, a matter of a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So.
The 11th, I think. I think that's the next.
You know, I'll let you, if you have any questions, and then I'll try to rein in my thoughts.
Tuesday, how late would it go in the evening, which is probably much more bothersome from the locale.
Understood.
The other one is the sound of the property line. The property line is pretty much right there, so amplification, it's not going to be.
The property line.
It's going to be very easy to say at the property line, which is right at the sidewalk, maybe loud. You know, some of the places in town have, it may be outdoor music, but it's shielded by a building or farther back from the property line.
Understood, yeah.
So that's the, I mean, the property line is right there.
Understood. I think this year, this calendar year's, our concern is just trying to start up a Sunday brunch indoor type of environment. So we don't have any, anything planned outside or, you know, that we're trying to plan outside for this year.
Right.
So if we could maybe move forward with an inside version of it and then revisit the outdoor side of it in the next calendar year, that could help as well.
I would.
That helps you.
So, yeah, that's, that's what I was going to recommend is that we approve.
I just want to say, you know, we'll be setting a precedent by, I'm not against it, right? I mean, you guys have been great operators and we love your restaurant, so this isn't, this is not a slight. It's, by doing this, we're saying it's okay to do music outside and I don't think any of us have even thought about what the implications to that would be.
Understood.
I mean, it would be, you know, like, for example, you could say, hey, we want outside music at, at the Cohasset Harbor Inn, right? And then all of a sudden, we're in a situation that, you know, we haven't anticipated. So I think, I think giving the selectmen a little time to talk about this and figure it out is a good thing.
Okay.
So what, yeah.
I'm willing to say indoors and then we'll see how it turns out.
Indoors and this would be.
Up until, you know, up until December, re-earning December and see how things go for the next calendar year. Outdoors, it's just probably the biggest concern would be, you know, sound of the property line. It's right there.
Understood.
And I think if you warm up the crowd per se with an indoor license first, see how it goes.
Sure.
Make sure there's no sound violations and things like that. We ran across this with a couple of other businesses in town where it was too loud at the property line, which, it was still shielded by a building and wall, so.
We want to do it as tastefully as possible. We're very, we don't want to scare off the opportunity whatsoever.
My favorite saying is you can't, we can't legislate taste. You know what I mean? So what's good for one person is, so I think that just begs a different question. I agree if somebody would like to make a motion to recommend a live music entertainment license for indoors at Bia Bistro, I think we should go there. And then when you apply for calendar 2019, I think we should all be prepared for a bigger discussion because it will have implications on other, on other, other businesses in town.
And I presume it's probably not going to be until the weather's good, so you've got.
For the outdoor, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
We're not holding you back.
You need to apply for an outdoor license for the, you're not.
I think the only idea Brian had regarding outdoor music for this calendar year was relevant to stroll, to perhaps a tree lighting that we'd like to, like to put a nice large tree on the patio, which is another issue. And maybe there have been hopes to have some accompaniment with that particular evening when we lit those trees. But if it's, if it gives you, you know, pause, then we can, we'd rather not go without any license if the indoor license is all you can do, we can do that.
Right. And we are discussing next the holiday stroll, which I think we can take up that discussion sort of universally.
The holiday stroll is a little bit different, I think, because it's outdoor. Everyone knows it's going to be that night. It's not going to go late. It's, you know, kids and families and policy if you have a, I'm not saying that you should, but let's say you had a guitarist out in the port, that's.
Well, we, I'm familiar with Brian's restaurant group, but he does have a stable of musicians that go, some of which are kind of rock bands and Tinker Sun in Norwell. At Galley, we have a bunch of guys that play just single acoustic, very tastefully room-appropriate stuff. That's much more the direction we'd be going for Bia, obviously. Is there any way that we could have a single night license for that type of, for that event, the stroll and then an indoor license and then revisit?
With the stroll, I don't think we would, we would issue that on a business, you know, I mean, I know the Arts Center applies for a one-day entertainment license or a three-day, three one-days entertainment licenses for the Arts Festival, but.
There's, there's like roving carolers and stuff at night.
Right.
I mean, I, it's not, it's not the same.
We permit that whole event.
Yeah, permit the event.
The event, yeah.
Permit the stroll and if people are going to do music for things as part of the strolling, I think that's just.
Yeah.
We could be part of the stroll, perhaps.
Correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Moving with the crowd and living near our restaurant type of thing.
I'd be shocked we would enforce, you know, a lot of noise on the holiday stroll.
Right.
It's carolers.
Okay, well.
This application is basically an annual license for entertainment purposes and I think if the board is in agreement.
Let's move the question.
We should move the question to if anybody would like to make a motion to approve of entertainment license for Bia Bistro for inside acoustic music.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. Okay, great.
Good luck.
And then we'll revisit the larger conversation when our renewals are up in December.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Charter is late, I'm leaving.
So next is the holiday stroll. So my only, yeah, do you want me to add? I think we should add, before we issue it, we should just add that it's indoors only. Is that all right? And then we can stop by and sign it, but it's in effect we've. Lawrence.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Larry Cortho.
Hi Larry, nice to meet you. So I'm sure, do you pay attention to social media?
Oh, yeah.
There's lots of questions. Who, what, where with the holiday stroll?
Good.
So you and, Kevin's joining us. If you would kind of give us a summary of the holiday stroll for this year.
Well, we're trying to get the chamber back up and running.
Great.
So I had, I came into a website that hadn't been updated in six years, a dead Facebook page. So I tracked a woman in West Virginia, somebody in New Hampshire, and then finally somebody in Marshville that last updated the website.
Oh, my gosh.
So we're getting a new website. He's working on that now.
For the chamber.
For the chamber. We're going to have a map and we're going to have a map that's layered so I can change the map for different events and different business listings. We're getting the membership up from three to about 48 by the end of next week.
Terrific.
And so the stroll, if this was July, I'd be happier, but it's not. So we're going to, we're going to have a good event.
Terrific. And if you could just give us the details of the event on the 8th?
Well, we've got, we've got a fire truck bringing Santa down and that's all coordinated with, I just spoke to the chief two days ago, Friday.
Can I stop you right there?
Yeah.
Is that in conjunction with the community center?
No, that's, that's.
Who usually does that on a Friday? So this is another.
The stroll is December 8th and they're doing their event on Friday, the 23rd.
Correct.
We're going to try to, I've got them involved with the chamber and the Arts Center involved.
Great.
Which were the two big ones.
Yep.
That weren't before. So we're going to publicize the event on the 8th at their event on the 23rd.
Okay.
So we've got a, Santa coming down on a fire truck, hopefully escorted by Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts to get the kids involved. We've got about five different singing groups that will be caroling around the village. We've got a tractor hayride that's going to go around the village and Chief Quigley and I are going to work out the mapping details of that. We've already talked about that. What else? We've got, one thing I noticed from years past is they didn't put a time up. They said four to seven, which looks like an open house on a piece of real estate. So I'm going to change it to actual times so that people know this is going here. And then they'll come and they'll stay.
What time does Santa arrive?
Working on that. Probably about 5:00.
He's busy.
He's a busy guy.
They still looking to have us coordinate something here on the common with the trees? Is that still in conversation?
Tree lighting.
We're thinking of, what I'm thinking about right now is talking to Paula first thing in the morning at the community center and her, the parade goes down that way and light it then. She is quite a crowd. We do it then, we leave it up and we keep it up to December. That gives us an extra two weeks of tree lighting.
So in other words, the actual tree lighting would be on November 23rd, the day after.
Right. And then we put stroll at that tree lighting.
Or all who could preside over it, not going to be.
And my goal is that you see me about four times a year sitting here.
Excellent.
That's the plan.
That's fabulous. The reason I asked about social media and then I'll, my colleagues speak, but there was a whole back and forth the other day on one of the, on one of the pages about who's doing the stroll and should we do this and can we do that? And so there was a lot of creativity, so.
I met with, I met with three residents.
Good.
At the bank Monday.
Who's them to help you.
Well, in this case, it would have been the filming of Witches of Eastwick 2. Snow machine, you know, really Hollywood type stuff, so.
One step at a time, I guess.
Yeah, well, I said next year maybe, but this year we've just got to try to get the event through.
Okay.
Now, the question is, because I had talked to Brian Houlihan about Bia and he mentioned he wanted to do a tree on the patio and light it and he wanted to have his outdoor heaters and roof flame with amplification. So at that point, I said, you get your own permit, so.
So.
I understand both sides of it. I didn't want to step on toes and say, oh, do what you want. We'll have a big permit.
Right. I mean, one of the things in this overall event, and I used to run events in Cohasset, one of the overall questions is, will there be any live music? So I think if we permit this event, per, you know, the information that is in this application, which includes.
Right.
Entertainment, like whether it's live carolers or something on the Bia Bistro patio.
Yeah.
I feel comfortable that we're permitting kind of a one-time use that, that night.
Yeah.
All the entertainment is there.
And it would only be Christmas music anyway. It's not like it's going to be a, you know.
Holiday celebration of whatever, whatever it is. I think that's fine. You know, this, this application addresses parking and road closures and, and, you know, first aid and public safety and everything. So I'm comfortable giving an event permit to this, understanding that there is going to be noise and activity and good noise.
Yeah, I think it's all, it'll be good noise, yeah.
Noise, 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 noise.
Okay, can't, the constable, somebody will be there in case it got too loud. They can just say, can you tone it down a little bit? I would think you can work with that.
Well, they can be the bridge.
Yeah, right.
And by the way, it is noted that this is an event from 4:00 to 7:00 PM.
Right.
And it, you know, the breakdown is between 7:00 and 8:00 PM and I think that anything that's spilled over would not be within the framework of this event application. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Larry, are you president of the Chamber of Commerce?
I suppose so. Congratulations, if you don't know.
Welcome, Larry. Happy to meet you.
Wanted to be president of the bank, but I'll take this.
No, the reason why I ask is when GE was looking to move their headquarters here, I was trying to find the Chamber of Commerce.
Me too, when I got here.
Sorry.
Yeah, my check came back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're straightening that all up.
Well, as somebody that worked in the village for about 12 years, it is hard with everybody trying to run their own business, right? And you know this.
I ran, I ran Noble's Camera for 30 years.
Yep, right.
So.
I remember.
It's real hard to.
I ran, I ran Hingham's for 10 years.
Yep.
And when I took that over, we were down to nothing.
Yeah.
And the same, three, three of us put all the money into Christmas. Oh, it's the same thing. I'm not, oh.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, so anyway.
Be careful, you are on TV.
So what brought us together was the train.
Yeah.
Well, fighting the train.
Yeah.
And then it built from that. So it's.
Well, we, we have an incredibly supportive community, so.
Oh, it's been, it's been great.
So the hardest thing is to say, whoa, you know, let's, let's go in smaller steps because there is a lot of creativity, a lot of magic, so.
I think we've made a lot of, I think we've made a lot of them.
Terrific. And this is a great event and it has been for a while, so it can only.
No, we're just going to try to enhance, like, with the Arts Center and their event. And I've talked to Patrice May. We're going to have painters in front of each store.
Great.
Bringing people down to the village.
Wonderful.
From, so it'll just enhance what we already have. Got a few other ideas.
All right, terrific. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I have a review of the application for the holiday stroll for 7:00 PM, December 8th, including outdoor entertainment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, nope. The unanimous?
Of course.
Good luck.
Good.
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You're running out. Okay, next up is the discussion of traffic safety fundamentals, speed limit with Chief Quigley.
Let me just lay a quick foundation for the board. So last year, so in the Municipal Modernization Act, there was a local option so that boards can control the speed limit without having to do traffic studies and all of those things. You have to make a finding and then, then you can reset speed limits. So at the last annual town meeting, that was proposed and the town meeting approved the adoption of that at the local level. We've had some internal conversations about it and, and rather than piece meetings, literally going to pick, you know, we don't have a lot of streets, but we have enough. And by the way, this only applies to town roads. So three, this is not, three is not covered by this. It's 228, so it's everything but 228 and 3A. Chief Quigley said, why don't we take a look at a broader approach to this and exempt out rather than exempt in? So, and we talked and said, hey, it's a great time to start the conversation. You all should have received a packet that the chief pulled here from Arlington, which is, are we taking a look at this?
That came out yesterday, I think.
Yeah, we sent it this morning, so.
So before, before we start, I just want to say that I don't want to have too substantive a discussion tonight or a vote tonight, only because we're not a full board and this, this kind of thing, I think, needs a little time to populate in the community and I think we benefit from a full board to make these decisions.
We didn't, we weren't coming for, before you tonight with an expectation of a decision. This is to start the socialization because this is a big step, but it's something that the law provides for and so it's time to start the conversation.
Great.
And this is new. It's not, part of that, we have to.
Yeah, and if you did traffic study and you wanted to go to 30 and it said 35, you go to 35. It was, it was actually worse. If you actually did a study in traffic with speeding, you had to raise the speed limit to the speed limit with some degree of reason, but this allows you to set a fundamental speed limit at a base. Well, let me let the chief.
Yep, take it away, though.
So literally this, the memo that I wrote the other day is literally, I just want to start the conversation about this. It's, it's been in the queue since the downtown meeting. It's come back from the Attorney General's office, has approved. So I think this, you know, we had a little bit of a lull in activity at the department, so I thought this was a good time to bring this to the board and just talk about it a little bit and maybe have you guys talk to your constituents and feel people out if that's a direction that the residents want to go in to making it a townwide 25 mile an hour speed limit.
So basically, your, is it fair to say it's a recommendation?
I'm willing to talk about.
Something to consider would be to make every road 25 miles per hour throughout town with the exception of roads that we do not have authority over, jurisdiction over.
3A and 228.
3A and 228.
What about private ways?
Those aren't governed, so.
I don't think any of them are law governed.
I'm asking the question so the people watching understand because we'll have them calling.
No, no, you're absolutely right. It wouldn't extend to, to private ways.
So we'd saw race in Fair Oaks.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, and my street and.
You have to tell someone.
Very good. If you get up to, if you get up to 30 yards, Fair Oaks, you're doing pretty good.
Uwis.
Yeah. But, you know, what was speed, speed limit is obviously safe. You know, trying to get people, but we don't want to be unrealistic as well. You know, if we're asking for 25, most people are probably going to go about nine or 10 over. So if you, yeah, just be a realist. But, you know, if, if, if the speed limit's 30, people are going to lose 40. If we shoot for 25, it'll probably be 35. You know, there's a percentage of people that just, you know, zip around.
This is kind of a crazy, there's no answer to this question I'm going to ask. It's sort of philosophical, but, I mean, you can't possibly enforce this. You know what I mean? Like, or how would you enforce it? And, you know, so what we're, what we're going to end up hearing, and I'm 100% for this without hearing from anything, anybody, but the, the question will be, the speed limits are 25 and people go over it all the time. I mean, that's what we're going to hear from a practical point of view is there's, because you have two or three cars on the road in any time. So.
So realistically, you could, speeding is speeding. If the speed limit's, you know, 30, you're not doing 31, you can be stopped and written.
Yeah, sure can.
There's no, there's no.
Right.
There's no grace, yeah.
No grace period.
There really isn't. It's just that the officer's discretion.
Okay.
You know, that said, most offices give you at least 12 over. It's not a guarantee. I cannot guarantee that. But.
We're on TV.
Yeah, I know. But, you know, most, most offices are pretty, pretty reasonable, but they do have discretion.
Right.
So for example, like North Main Street right now is permitted at what speed?
There's 20, 25, 30, 35.
Okay.
Four different speed limits.
Wow.
So that's why I gave you the Arlington Plan has a list where you can, you know, we can exempt out different roads. And again, that's, that's going to be a question for you guys and your constituents. You know, we can, we work with rules and it's what's reasonable.
It's, it's interesting because the other day I was driving down Forest Ave, which is probably the place a lot of people speed because it's a straight shot. Most people going from one end to the other, except those that live there. And I was purposefully going 25 miles an hour and it was, it was a good clip. I was very comfortable going twenty-five, and I think if nothing else, it's a, it's kind of an education campaign that, you know, ultimately.
What do we have generally on the roads now?
Uh, most of the town, the majority of the town is thirty, it's, most of the town is thickly settled.
Is thickly, and that's only thirty?
Yes.
So is, is that the state, thickly settled is thirty?
That's a standard, that, there's actually a definition for thickly settled.
That's what you learn in your driver's ed class.
Driver's ed houses less than two hundred feet apart for one mile.
So like some roads, like Main Street, as you go up, it'll go to twenty-five when it gets densely and then to thirty, forty?
Yeah, so when you get up towards Cedar Street.
Yeah.
You know, past Cedar Street by the T station, it goes up to thirty-five, but down here towards the Combe, it goes, you know, twenty then twenty-five. Or thirty from, say about Sawyer Street.
As you drive into town, the speed limits drop, it should come down. But again, if you picked up, if you picked up speed past the train station, you don't think about it unless you get stopped at the light, then boom, you're on top of a very densely residential area, and then there's the baseball field.
You know, I think. Main Street's the one big exception out of all the roads, you know?
If we could get it down to maybe two speed limits, it'd be helpful.
The thirty-five is pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Down by the train station.
And get more and more people riding bikes and, you know, I mean, we're starting to get a lot more traffic on the roads.
We're not a very big town, it doesn't take that long to get from one end to the other, if you're really gonna go fast, go to three A.
Right, right.
Cut across town.
It, it, it gives us an opportunity to, assuming we were to approve this, it gives us an opportunity to just have an education campaign, you know, slow down, hey, there's so many distractions on the road and, I think twenty-five is actually a very comfortable speed within the town.
The, the essential.
So I was walking the dog this morning, and there's the flashing light, tells you how fast, and somebody on forty-four off Sawyer Street, and I'm staring at the light, and as I'm staring at the light, I've got the dog, and I see it drop down to thirty-three. So I think something around twenty-five to thirty is probably reasonable, because I think the roads are gonna be North Main, Forest Ave, Sawyer, and Beach, and, um, not Beach, but, um, Con Street. Fairly straight, and they're all downhill, which tend to speed up things. Maybe as, from a select point of view, you know, put the cars on, you know, on the speed control of twenty-five and go around town and see how, is it too slow, is it too fast? Do you feel that that's a reasonable speed to go through town, so the next time we meet, we can say, no, it was on cruise control twenty-five and it was okay.
That's solid, yeah, that's kind of a boost after.
So, but, so the question is essentially, do we want, does the town want to go from roughly, uh, to, to thirty miles per hour in most, on most public roads on average to twenty-five? Is that the question roughly before us?
Correct.
Or if we were to socialize it, that would be a way of asking the question?
Do, do we want to make our fundamental speed law in Cohasset twenty-five miles per hour and possibly have exceptions to that on certain roads?
So it would be on average twenty-five as opposed to on average thirty now, I'm just thinking of a way to post the questions so it can be answered just on average, so essentially it's a slowing down of the traffic. So in asking for this, do you have any, either any studies or thoughts or sort of reason why twenty-five is better than thirty?
Uh, just my experience has been, you know, slower, you know, you just have more time to react, there's just, there's a lot more distractions nowadays as well, cell phones and bikers and things like that, so, you know, you can't go along with slower.
So as a board, when you come to us with this, you'd like to see us sort of ponder, research this a bit, like you said, talk amongst people and begin this conversation, because it seemed to me we would need to have more than, like Diane said, than just tonight on this, you know?
But you need to start the conversation.
Yeah, that, that's to get some buy-in from the public.
Yes.
You know, see what's said on social media and take all that in.
Yep.
If it's not posted, it's thirty?
If it's not posted, it's, it's, right now, if it's not posted, it's thirty.
Okay.
And that goes for most places in the, in the state.
Yeah.
And Arlington, so the information that you sent on Arlington was from two thousand seventeen, did they actually pass this?
Yeah, it, it is, but.
And it is twenty-five on all roads with the exception of state roads?
And Situate has just done this as well.
And Situate did it.
If you notice, coming into, into Situate from, you know, the back roads and all and stuff, they, they have these signs, um, so they're out there, Situate has done this.
So they have, how long has Situate done that way?
Oh, I've noticed them the last month or so, so they, they probably, you know, went to their annual town meeting, so I would guess it was right around there.
So one of the things we could do is, is keep an eye on how it goes with Situate, we can, all of our contacts, including, you know, with the police, just sort of, let's, and, and even before we make a decision, I think actually, we ought to talk to some Situate folks as to what they're, how we're going with them, let them run it for a few months.
I think one of the keys is, I've noticed a couple, you know, I think they're in the process of Situate removing some of their thirty mile per hour signs.
Signs.
Some are still up, so I think there's a little confusion, at least for me, when I drove in on Summer Street, you know, I saw conflicting signs.
Really good point, how many, I mean, do we have a sense of how many signs are out there?
We actually have an inventory of signs. Jason has that number.
All right, great.
We actually, because we'd, we'd actually be good if we had a signage around.
We actually save a little money, because you'll have, you only have to post at the entrances to town.
Yeah.
You don't have to put them on every road, unless you check everything, like at the school's.
Right, you know how I feel about signs, I don't like signs at all, so.
It would make the, it would, it would reduce.
If you uniform it, right, it would reduce the actual signs.
And it looks like Arlington, most of them are, a lot of them are twenty-five, and the rest are really thirty, there are a couple like the, probably like the Main Street or other places where there's three or four speed limits on it, they're probably the longer roads in town.
Major roads that are passed through.
Right, that's where they started them.
And the most safer part is forty, but, but that's probably where, it's a, it seems to be a pretty good model for Cohasset, you've got a couple of main roads that are faster in different areas.
Yeah, I worked at Boston, I worked at Cambridge, and there was, you know, this is a real city, so Arlington's sort of somewhere in between.
But just, just to confirm, Arlington actually went to twenty-five universal?
Yes.
So that chart we were looking at was what they were at, which is similar to us, right?
That's right, yeah, so a lot of them are twenty-five, make sure it's thirty, and then somewhere like the long roads.
So, yeah, let's, um, let's socialize this and come back and have a meet-year conversation and make a decision sooner than later.
Perfect.
Great.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Next up is an update on the operations of Red Lion Inn, Cohasset Harbor Inn, Atlantica, George McGoldrick. Thank you.
Good evening.
Do I look well fed?
Yeah.
Can you give us an update on where you're at?
I'll give you an update, so I'm George McGoldrick, one oh seven Border Street, I'm part of a new partnership, new company that's just been formed called the Cohasset Hospitality Partners. And the Cohasset Hospitality Partners is made up of myself, a gentleman named Ted Lubitz, who's a homegrown town boy, a real estate kid, he's actually my neighbor on Border Street. And then the third partner is a company called The Catered Affair, which started in Situate forty years ago, and has grown to be about a twenty million dollar a year company, who are currently based, uh, their offices are based in Rockland. And Alex and Andrew Markony are the two principals from The Catered Affair that are a partner in the Cohasset Hospitality Partners. We have an agreement with the owner of the three properties, the Red Lion, Atlantica Salt House, and the Cohasset Harbor Inn, to take over and assume management and control of those three properties. The, uh, the agreement is nearly complete, but we have been in place for about almost a month now, and as of this Thursday evening, we will be opening the Red Lion Tavern, which has been dormant for about two years, based on the dust in the refrigerators and the stoves. And so that is, that's gonna open this coming Thursday, it'll be open from Wednesday evenings through Sunday evenings at the start. And as time goes on, we're obviously gonna hope, hoping to open more for lunches and everything else, we're starting with the dinners for the five days.
And is that just in like what we would call the bar area or in the restaurant area?
So that's the bar and the restaurant area.
Okay, both, yeah.
We renamed it the Tavern.
Okay.
Uh, the Tavern seats about fifty people, uh, the bar area of that seats about another thirty, and then there are two nice rooms off of it, one's called the Winter Garden, that'd be great for corporate dinners and events, and then the smaller room in front, uh, part of the original structure, uh, that probably seats another twenty or thirty, so there's two rooms, two anterooms off of the restaurant that'll be perfect for smaller family gatherings or small business meetings and such, and, and with our partner, The Catered Affair, we're gonna be pushing more of those activities. Obviously, the barn, the Lions Hall, is a phenomenal venue for weddings and any other type of event you can have, but, say what you will, the, the, the previous owner did a phenomenal job building that structure, and, I've been to a number of weddings and other events there, and it's, it's, it's a, it's a great place to gather, uh, so that obviously is gonna be continued, uh, there's already seventy events booked for next year. And so we're gonna be with the new Catered Affair group and the sales team that's adding to the existing two saleswomen that are there, we're gonna be looking to generate a lot more business in those properties, not only just in the barn, but also, as I mentioned, in the restaurant and the other areas, so. There'll be a lot more traffic downtown Cohasset, we hope to see, starting, starting this Thursday evening. The other two properties, the Cohasset Harbor Inn, is basically under study right now as to what the future holds for that property, uh, there was a gentleman in here in town this past spring and summer that had some ideas, so we're looking at those ideas and everything else, and, we, we'll be able to come back to you the next month or two to tell you what we think our plans are for the, for that property. In the interim, we are opening up what was formerly known as the Brisa Restaurants, has a new name called The Cove, and that's gonna actually open up in a couple of weeks. And The Cove will, uh, will definitely be doing brunches on Sunday, and will likely be doing dinners also Wednesday through Saturday, Sunday, perhaps more of a family style, burger night type thing maybe, and, seems to be a real dearth of, of places to take the children in town, so maybe that's what fills that need up immediately, so that's where we're kind of investigating and getting that going. And then the, the last parcel, of course, is Atlantica and the Old Salt House, the Old Salt House, as we all know, the pier partially has collapsed, so we're getting engineers and bits on rebuilding, uh, the pier, back to the original seawall that was done two, three hundred years ago. The, uh, that is, will be done before the start of the season, so that the, with the approvals of the town, we'll have the Salt House back open, uh.
In with spring, right, summer.
Next spring, summer, correct. And Atlantica Restaurant is showing its age, it's got a lot of problems with the roof and the HVAC, so we're looking at that, and we'll come back to you in a couple of weeks and let you know what the status and the times and, and hours for that property, but, we have had numerous consultants and engineers and roofers and HVAC people over the last couple of weeks trying to get a handle on it, as this whole project really has just come about in the last month, seems like ten years, but it's really only been about a month.
We hear ya.
We've been spending ages a week on, on the project, so, just asked my wife, she hasn't seen it. So that, that's got the biggest problems in terms of infrastructure and problems with, with the building, and so we're, we're addressing that, so. We have a lot of good support from lenders on the projects, we have a lot of good support from the staff that's there, we're getting new staff in, getting a lot of people coming out of the woodwork, wanting to come back and work, and, so we're excited to be able to bring the properties back, it's gonna take a while, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while, it'll be slow progress, it's not gonna be all shiny new painting next week, it'll, it's gonna take a good year to get everything back up, but based on our projections and based on what we know that our partners can do and what they've done in the past, we know we get a lot more activity in those properties.
On the, the far side of Atlantica, on the seawall portion, is that, that's pretty much intact?
So the far side, so facing east, directly south of Harbor, that is actually, uh, work is scheduled to repair the wall underneath there, probably in the next couple of weeks, it's actually similar to what happened when the town did the seawall along Border Street. Uh, it's, it's the same, it's not the same company, but it's the same type of work that's gonna be done there, but it's in, it's in, that side's in pretty good shape, yeah.
Kevin.
So, um, how are you, um, you, you're essentially a management company that's doing this?
No, so we're taking majority control on all the properties, and management control.
So, um, in terms of licenses, all licenses and stuff, what, these will be going through your group?
Correct, so we're coming back on the twenty-seventh, I think we're scheduled, uh, with the, the new management team, Mick Carlisle, who was formerly at Dooley's, is the restaurant manager over at the Red Lion Tavern, so you'll see him on the twenty-seventh, and then most likely Andrew Post, um, for the Chide, Chide is Cohasset Harbor Inn, for that restaurant there, uh, you'll know that before the twenty-seventh.
So your, uh, your group is gonna actually own, uh, over fifty percent of this?
That's correct.
Is that correct, and the corporations, are they changing name and all?
Yes, they are.
They're changing, you're gonna start with new corporations and all?
Yes, they are.
Um, what's the role gonna be of the previous owner?
Previous owner is a minority silent partner, he has told us he's gonna be, uh, resting his head on the sand in Costa Rica, and, um, that's part of our deal.
And, and you'll be making, you'll be authorized to make all the decisions that are related to this?
Correct, the operating partner is.
The controlling partner?
The controlling partner, that's correct.
Good, good luck with this, huh? Sounds like good plans.
Well, anything?
Uh, delighted, uh, it's been a long time coming, and I'm delighted to see you and the group step up, I'm, I'm, you can't imagine how excited I am.
It's a good, it's a really good team, actually.
Yeah.
We've spent every waking hour together for the last six weeks.
And it's worked.
I've been walking the dog and I've seen them at random hours.
Right.
You know, standing at the deck outside, yeah.
Congratulations, I just have one question about the inn, do you think you're gonna try to run the inn as a, as a hotel, or are you thinking of other options?
The Cohasset Harbor Inn?
Yeah.
I think we're looking at all the options, uh, the, the previous harbinger was in with the plans to do condominium development, we're, we're gonna look at that, um, structurally, the building's actually pretty good.
Yeah.
But one of the biggest things that we want to do, and we're not, we didn't think of this, the harbinger group was part of it, is really to open up the waterfront there, it's, it's blocked off from the town, uh, there's no access, there's no physical access there, so we're, we have some ideas to come back before the town, and maybe somehow we can open that up, and create some more space and some more activity for the town, so that's kind of our, our goal, to do that, and.
That's great.
So we've got, we've got a bunch of different ideas, and it's also, as you know, it's also, uh, if so much work is done to the building, it falls into chapter ninety-one laws, the chapter ninety-one laws require that public access, so, everything we're doing is based on what we know that the state wants, needs to have happen, and what we, we want, we think the town wants, but obviously we're gonna work with the town to figure out what the town exactly wants, we don't know the answers, but, we kind of know the blueprint for it, the outline, and we're gonna work with the town to get, to fill in all the pieces.
That's great, so if people want to book rooms at Red Lion Inn over the holidays, can they do that?
Red Lion Inn is available as of today, uh, and also the Cohasset Harbor Inn is, is, nothing's gonna happen to Cohasset Harbor Inn for over a year, I mean, just, if you did do the, the big change, it, it's permits, obviously, it's gonna take better than a year, so no, those, we're actually, the, the previous owner had never even had it under any of the websites, so we put it on hotels dot com and immediately got some reaction the last couple of weeks.
Wow.
It's, yeah, it's some things.
You can say it's easy, but.
So they're open for business if you want to rent rooms over the holidays?
Rent rooms at Cohasset Harbor Inn, rent rooms at the Red Lion, that's correct.
Great.
And then by, by reopening the, what's now gonna be called The Cove, the old Brisa space, we'll have food and beverage there, and that should entice more people to use the rooms, and they can walk downstairs and have drinks and dinner and lunch and stuff.
That's great, congratulations, George.
That whole frontage there where the Brisa was, it is terrific place for a quick snack, dinner.
Brilliant.
Taffy, glass of wine, watch the sunset, uh, it's one of my favorite places to do.
Yeah, it's, it's probably, it's a great space.
I'm already counting up the meal stacks over here.
There you go, there's our town manager.
So the forbearance that we're gonna ask for.
I'll be contributing, is that right?
Yeah, no, I, you, you know, we're, we couldn't be happier, and I think it's really, um, extra special, and we're extra fortunate to have town residents.
Yeah.
Who have pride in this community like we do, and like everybody in the community does.
It helps that they live around the corner.
That, that's right. I understand, I mean, you know, we can study everything, you know, and, and you, you have to build appropriate business models, but you know what we need, um, you know, you and your partners, because you're of, you know, of this place, and I think that's really, um, important, and we're thrilled. I, I was gonna ask questions about the hotel, which Jack asked, my only sort of, kind of technical question is in terms of license renewals, so when they come before us on the twenty-seventh, which is our next meeting, are those, is that meeting going to be for annual renewals, for permits, for?
That's just for the change of manager, they're in the process of processing renewals.
Okay.
And, you know, we'll have to go, you know, we, we, depending on where they are with everything else, you know? The, the most important thing is that the manager's at place first, that the renewals are more.
I just want to make sure administratively, we stay on top of all of that, from, from.
Yeah, they have to plan a pack, they have personally come and pick up the packets for their licenses, and again, I think we're still waiting for them to give us more details as to the operations and stuff.
Okay, and then Atlantica, is that open at all now, or?
Sorry, Atlantica's open this weekend, but we're having some serious issues with leaks.
Okay.
So that, that decision will have to be next week.
Okay, and just as long as you communicate with the office, and you kind of close shutdowns or anything, so, great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You'll see a lot of us, you'll see a lot of us in the next thirty years.
Yeah, you'll see a lot of us as well.
Yeah, we like to go to those places.
Great, all right, I had a delicious chicken and wedge salad.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, George. All right, um, oh, right on time, um, Town Hall, um, so, um, basically, I think on November twenty-seventh, we're gonna talk a little more global and macro about next steps on Town Hall, we just had our, goals and objectives workshop last week, and, um, we'll each delineate our own, um, what, what would you call it, our, our own.
Our plan.
Our plan of responsibility for the areas, Town Hall being one of the most major ones, um, there was a group with advisory. Um uh there was a group with advisory, capital budget, Jack and I earlier tonight, and um that half hour discussion was really focused on the warrant article. Um so I think what we need in step in, if if I'm wrong, I think our next step and certainly the the most important thing we need to do on the twenty seventh, again, I wanna have a bigger conversation, but is to figure out exactly what that warrant article will be, we put the placeholder in the in the in the warrant and um we have to figure out what the ask actually will be and what it's for and and um get those specifics delineated and then we'll then send it, um whatever that, I I would say almost in the form of a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Um that detailed, then we'll send it to capital budget and advisory for their opinions and then once they weigh in, we'll have an opportunity, if not before town meeting, certainly at town meeting on the tenth, to um make a recommendation, but I think we have one meeting after the twenty seventh, December third?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
No, you're not until after ten.
That's it.
Yeah.
Gotta do it then.
Yeah. Twenty seventh is the meeting that we should wrap that up.
So so bas- basically what that means is our recommendation to special town meeting on whatever article might be there for town hall. And last meeting, we discussed engineering, possibility of engineering for roof, we'll have to make that decision that evening. But we will have before then the opinions of capital and advisory, does that make sense?
As long as we do.
Yeah, so we'll we'll do the best we can.
Right, and they were both, the chairs were both there to say that that's the plan.
Right, yeah. I I think they're scheduled, I know the capital schedule is set up to be able to do that.
Yeah, and advisory's gonna do it too.
Yep. Yep.
So, I mean, I mean, let's not be vague about it, we're gonna add, I think we're roughly, we're gonna ask for some appropriative funds to have an engineer scope out uh the details on replacing the roof on old town hall.
Right.
On old town hall, not not the NS.
And that's what's in the warrant.
And we just go, right.
That's the, we're worried about that because of damage, we want the structure closed.
Right, and that's what we discussed at the last meeting, the only thing is the number and the funding source, but.
So when are, my question, when are citizens gonna actually see this though? I guess that's what's happening.
See the work? Actually see the work?
Well, no, they see the warrant article that they're voting on.
See the article? The motions, so what's your typical timeline for the motions?
Um well.
I mean, I guess what I'm thinking, I mean, is is I'm actually concerned about showing up at town meeting and that's the first time people see a warrant. Now, you you know, I mean, the the ideal pace of cost would be that it would be written in now, which it won't be, but I'm just having a hard time. I just wanna, again, thinking about, cause the public's not involved in this yet at this point, I I it makes me nervous the first time being town meeting, that's all.
If if everything locks in place, we can have the motions done and distributed at least a week ahead of time. We always do that pre-town meeting show, which I've kind of kicked off a little bit, we will kind of do it next week, but I wanted to wait for this to perk a little bit more, so people can watch that on TV and have a little better idea about it.
So I I might not have been clear, but I I I want this board to discuss the motion.
Yep.
On this particular item on the twenty seventh, so that that would be the time that, so I understand that the, you know, we have, we have the warrant articles, which are basically the the, and most of those are specific enough that the the public will know what they're voting on, what the motion language will ultimately be a little different than the article. This is the one thing we don't have the details on, but I definitely want that on the twenty seventh for us to discuss, but we won't vote to recommend it, the details will be there, we won't vote to recommend it only because we are gonna wait for the advisory opinions of capital budget and advisory, does that make sense?
So what will we do, be voting on that the day?
No, we would just say, this looks good, this, and and we may come next Tuesday or Tu- Tuesday the twenty seventh and say, no, we don't wanna do this. Pull the article or hold the artic-, you know, I mean, the article's on the warrant, but we doesn't get remote on it at town meeting.
But we're gonna, but we're gonna have. But we're gonna have the actual article, it won't be changed in front of us, is the actual motion, excuse me, motion, I apologize.
The actual motion, correct, yep.
And so, and then there'll be vetting and and votes for the advisory and the capital, I'm assuming that what you're talking about is that we're gonna meet just before town meeting and vote ourselves?
Correct, the recommendation.
And that vote will be announced at town meeting.
Correct, right, right, does that make sense?
Unless you, unless everything lines up before that, I mean, we'll see how the next two weeks play out.
Yeah, but why don't do it that way, I mean, I don't, I, really, you know, we're not voting on funds for a roof, we're just voting on funds to have an engineer scope out the scope.
That's fine.
Correct.
Studying whether to do it, uh what it would be.
Right, and we're not at risk for a lot of money here, it's just, we're trying to take preventative action, you know, the citizens have asked us to to protect the structures and I I think we, you agree, we felt like the roof was really important to move on, and if we don't do it now, we're looking at next fall before we can start doing anything about it.
Right. Right, and the other, the other thing we talked about last week and we we've talked about is th- this is one step forward we can make to protect the integrity of old town hall in particular that will, that's gonna happen no matter what the ultimate project is for town hall. Um and um and we we could theoretically vote to recommend it to town meeting on the twenty seventh, cause we will have the motion, but in deference to the advisory and capital budget committees, I I think it's really important that we all work together and the process is appropriate.
Yeah, we hear from them, I agree.
If they vote on it prior to the twenty seventh, I'd like to vote on it.
They won't.
Oh, but if they do, I would agree.
Right.
I don't think advisory can get a quorum.
But if, but if they do, I'd like to vote on it.
If they do.
Right, right, I I agree, but they won't, yeah, cause next week is Thanksgiving week, so I know that advisory's not meeting, so.
I'll just pipe, I'll just pipe right in, sorry.
If they, if they possibly can.
But that also, Chris, I think that puts um pressure on you in the next couple of days to work Jason on what that motion might look like.
We 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 were talking earlier today about, uh and and just next steps, drafting a motion is.
Yeah. Yeah.
At this point, after, after.
Sometimes, you just gotta have the number.
After a couple hundred.
Just gotta have the number and understand the funding source.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, any other questions, all right.
Are there any other warrant articles we need to open?
Nope.
Everything else is done.
They're all done.
It's gonna be in the mail soon, isn't it?
Yeah, it's actually went to the printer uh uh tonight, uh so we're all good.
What's the law, do we have to do hard copy, is that the law, you can't do electronic?
No, eh the the way the bill is currently read, you have to distribute it by mail. You could, I mean, there was apparently a number of years ago, this went to front of town meeting and it was rejected to make go electronic, some communities have that electronic.
Hmm.
Um and then have, you know, copies available at the post office, I mean, at the library or town hall if people think about it.
What does it cost us to have things printed?
Uh I wanna say it's about four thousand dollars.
That makes sense.
And it depends, and it's big, and and it could be bigger than that, depending how thick the thing is, this is a very small warrant, it's very thin.
That could pay for our engineering of the roof.
No, I mean.
Yeah, we we need to talk about that, right, going forward.
And we have done, you know, we we do positively electronically, the motions are up electronically, so people can get that now, much easier than it used to be.
Yep.
And that's a, that's a bigger conversation.
Yes, indeed, it's on my big list, okay, all right.
Correspondence.
Yes.
So you have um, there's this three things, uh the proclamations for retirees, we're still drafting, um so um I don't know if you need to formally, you know, you know, vote them and if you want, you could just vote to authorize that we draw them up and you can all sign them next week. Um uh cause we're still scrambling for some details for some of these folks, we wanna make sure that they're they're reading well.
No, I think that's fine, and then you put some ministry.
Uh but the other two, which you should, you have two draft letters in front of you, you should have two draft letters in front of you.
One.
I think I only have one, which is the, um, I'm sorry, just for the, which is the open space.
Do we not have copies of everybody on this? Uh all right, here, why don't we, why don't you just?
So the open space, we um were asked by Peter Pescatori a couple of weeks ago to approve, um make a recommendation for the open space and recreation plan that's that they're submitting to the state. The letter is to the executive office of energy and environmental affairs. Uh the Cohasset Board of Selectmen has reviewed the proposed Cohasset Open Space and Recreation Plan for the period two thousand eighteen to.
I'm sorry, that's twenty four, yeah.
Yep, to two thousand twenty four. And has voted unanimously accept the plan and support its submission.
In time, like last week.
The Open Space and Recreation Committee has worked hard on developing this plan and the group's work shows through in the final product now before you. We are excited about the plan, look forward to its formal adoption by the state, so should the state be by the Commonwealth?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm I'm I still default to New York, I apologize, so.
Yes.
Okay. And did we, we did, we did not vote yet to.
You can write, can change, it's all very fine.
There's four of us, like.
They didn't, so this letter is anticipation of you voting in support of, funding the plan.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And it's unanimous.
Uh well, I I I I dread, this is, this is a tweak off the one that was done uh ten year, uh eight years ago, so.
Sure. And the plan, remind me?
It's on the website.
Yep.
It's the Open Space Recreation Plan.
Right.
It's on the committee page, if you go to the Open Space Committees page, it's right there.
He reviewed it with us a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
He did, he went through the highlights, yeah.
Yep, 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 that's what I meant, I I I didn't remember getting the full plan, but I certainly remember his slides, yep.
No, he did, it's all, it's all right, he he did his paraphrase, give the highlights, uh and there's tons of other materials that are in the plan, so.
All two eighty pages.
So um I guess my only question is, what's the timetable on their submission to the state?
Um believe it or not, well, this is the biggest w- letter pending and the master plan is tomorrow night.
Okay.
So uh and then uh Peter's doing one for the planning board in advance, cause that meeting in front of a few weeks, so this will all get submitted in the next week.
Okay. Okay.
Um so if if the board's okay with it, um and and you know, I think they'll, I think s- water's tom- uh next, early next week, I forget, but it's all come together, it's all come together.
Does water have to weigh in on it?
No, Public Works does, so it's not the water to a boards, cause they had comment, there were certain segments in there that they added.
Right, and and this literally is just an endorsement of the process and the product.
It's a letter that has to go on with the application.
Correct.
Yeah.
It it doesn't mean that you have to adopt every single aspect of the plan, it just, yeah.
Correct, yep, just wanna be clear.
There's another review.
Okay, um.
I think that was fairly vague and this, it's, you know, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, vague is good, that's good, um.
Can we move it?
Yep, with somebody who'd like to move approval of the letter um recommending, or or let's say.
Get the board's guidelines reviewed, the Cohasset Open Space Recreation Plan, in two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Aye, okay, unanimously approved and the letter is fine.
I'll tell them. We'll tweak it up and have it at three of your signature.
Yeah, change it to two thousand twenty four and the Commonwealth, okay, great, and then the next letter is, um we discussed last week, was a um
And Commonwealth.
Letter to um Mass Department of Transportation.
Yep.
Um thanking them, kind of, so it reads, dear administrator Gulliver from MassDOT, the Cunningham Bridge on Atlantic Ave looks better than it ever has. And while we recognize that tasks remain before the project is complete, we want to extend our thanks to you and your staff for all your work to date. The residents of Cohasset and the entire, and of the entire region will travel, will travel over, walk and ride across and cast for strippers from what is clearly a much better looking and more functional bridge than what existed before. Crossing one of the most scenic spots in town, the Coh- Cunningham Bridge plays a significant role as both a transportation corridor and a public resource. Collaborating with the community on critical issues of design and function made the entire project far more successful, for which we are sincerely grateful. We hope that this col- collaborative model will be used by MassDOT in the future, both here and in Cohasset and around the Commonwealth. Again, our thanks, we look forward to working with you and team on future projects, sincerely, Cohasset Board of Selectmen. Any have any comments?
Oh, yeah, I I I'd like to see the bridge totally done before we send it out, that's all, because I wanna make sure that it's done, um that's my only concern.
What's the timetable on that, do we have a sense?
Spring, they can't finish the paving until it it gets warm again, so.
I would agree with Paul, it's something, seems nice, but I just don't wait till this is done to be, I'm sorry.
I mean, I I spend a lot of, a lot of hours on the phone with DOT and meetings and all the rest of that, and I I I don't wanna be short shrift by having something not show up on time or not done until the letter is out, once the letter is out, I'll.
Can be used.
Big check in to John, you know, you know, I'll be happy as can be and I'll handle it myself to to.
Yeah, yeah.
Like a box of chocolates, you gay?
I'm fine, I don't think it matters.
Okay, all right, so the letter's written, I know, thank you very much, um.
Well, this was just a fancy request, you can do it on the other one. And actually, it'll have to be amended then, cause it'll be done by the time you're done.
Yes, yep, all right, so we'll just put this on on hold till um the spring and.
Right.
Right, I think it's a great idea, because they they really have done a very, as of now, have done a very good job in.
No, I I think we've we've, in our last meeting and then again tonight, just by reading that letter, um you know, are publicly acknowledging how pleased we are with where we're at today and um I agree.
It it really does look tremendously better, it just fits better, the ground looks great.
Yep.
The 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 steel is is coated, you know, to blend as opposed to that green that jumped down like a highway overpass, it's dramatic.
And you know, there hasn't been any major catastrophic problems, there was the weather, it shifted some of the havens, I think the biggest problem was getting the main, main beam down.
Yeah, that was a very great look.
Down Beach Street, they they wanted to cut a couple of trees down, I mean, you can't, eventually they got it down there, but that was probably the biggest hurdle for the bridge, you know, they're talking about bringing it by boat.
And actually, the cornerstone says twenty nineteen, so it's, you know, it's not officially out.
Right, a- as somebody who spent, and Chief Sylvia will ribs me about this, spent about twenty minutes one selectmen's meeting many years ago talking about the paint color of the flagpole in common, because uh that's my thing, um the color on the rails is perfect, it absolutely is, so and we didn't have to legislate that, so it just worked out nicely, so, okay, great.
I I just wanna say, I'm glad the selectmen found a way to um, you know, ask for what they wanted and did it in a really professional way and we got what we wanted. I think there's a lesson there for future board of selectmen, you know?
I I think with, I think when you said that with MassDOT and you, are we, you know, explain and give facts and back it up, I think they're working.
The the the, the ultimate lesson, and we can take up another board meeting when it's complete, the ultimate lesson in this is that things take a while
They're very good.
for people to absorb impartly, uh you know what I mean, uh and and I think that um we have to have a little bit of patience and understand that there is a period of time, no matter what project we're doing, especially if it's visual and impactful in the community, because this railing, the railing that exists now was one of the original presentations to the town. And we rejected it because we were a little skittish about it and change, so so the lesson, I think, is, and we ultimately got there. Um I think the lesson is that we always need to build in, it goes for town hall, we need to build in time to really have input and people to get comfortable with change and then, you know, deliver a good product, so.
So are the proclamations for retirees, uh we'll just draft them and you can all sign them next week.
Sure.
Yep. Would you do a favor when you have the um proclamations written, just send them to us?
Yeah, sure, for comments, yeah.
Ahead of time, just so that when we come in and and.
So you know what they, you could read, yeah, know what is there.
Right, right.
Kind of like a motion then to all through his town area to draft proclamations for retirees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we're all there, um.
Okay, I've gotta pivot right then to a week from tonight, November twentieth, um at six P M at the Senior Center, the town will host its second annual employee recognition event. We're gonna be recognizing nine individuals who have service with the town of between twenty and twenty-five years and three retirees, uh which we're we're very, we're ha- we're sad for us and happy for them as they prepare for the next chapters in their lives, so um uh Tuesday at six P M.
Six P M, six P M.
Um we're gonna close, we're gonna close town hall a little early that night, just so people understand, um so we can get staff over there.
We got an email about that today.
Uh and it'll be about an hour, it's gonna be catered, we have a lunch, just have some some hors d'oeuvres, some hors d'oeuvres, some healthy things and, you know, just coffee and tea and water. Um and we're gonna go through something very similar to last year, so.
How many folks will we be recognizing this year, twelve?
Twelve, nine, nine service awards and three retirements.
Great.
Uh so the awards for the retirements will differ, if you remember, we did a couple of retirements here at the board last year, we're gonna use, do something very similar uh for them, but in a public setting this time. Um a well, a bigger setting, so um the um, so I I, you know, I would love to have all of you participate, uh and, you know, present the certificates, uh I'll 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 read the names and 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 we're gonna give a, you know, a token to all of the honorees as well.
Great.
So it should be, it should be a nice event, looking forward to it.
It's great.
Uh and there's a nice cross section of some folks from, I think it's five different departments, um including the town clerk, so I care all of Saint Pierre. Um facilities, police, fire, um it's a nice, it's a nice, like library, it's a nice mix, it's a nice.
Great, congratulations, that's awesome.
So that's our highlight, um so happy, be Thanksgiving, so.
Anything else from you?
Uh nope, I mean, the football team is on onto this, uh on onto a big playoff game this week.
Got two.
Yeah.
And boy soccer.
And uh and boy soccer too, so uh two big, uh you know, field hockey and girl soccer did tremendously well, they they uh they made it deep in the playoffs.
Yep.
Uh and now we have two teams still in contention, which is pretty impressive.
The the football team, the two teams they lost during the regular season, the Vietnam playoffs, so one of them was Marshfield.
Yes, they did, they were playing Saint Mary's of Lynn in in, no, in Medford.
And Carver. Oh.
Uh they, yeah.
That's their next game?
That's the football team, neutral site, uh it's kind of, it's currently scheduled for Friday, but it's gonna be pretty bad weather, so.
Men.
So this is the quarterfinals, is that what?
No, this is one, this is the next step, if they win this, they go to the Super Bowl.
Super Bowl.
So it's semi, quarterfinals. Quarterfinals, quarterfinals, so four teams left, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, what what will win, they go to the Super Bowl.
You mean, if they win Saint Mary's?
Then they go to Super Bowl.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's one more one, just let's see.
And the boy, the boy, I think, the boy soccer's pretty deep in this too, I'm not sure.
I think they have a subsectional, yeah, so I don't wanna. A subsectional, yeah, so I don't wanna speak, cause I I don't remember, but they're, I think they're one or two games away from the state title in their division.
No, no, I, yeah.
Very exciting, the girls just about made it, so.
Great seasons.
Yeah, that is a.
And Thanksgiving, uh, is the whole game.
Oh, the Thanksgiving game is the whole game and that's in Cohasset.
In all. Oh, it's in Cohasset?
Right, I think it's in Glass, yes, it's in Glass this year.
Yes.
What time's that stand, you have to know?
It's in, it's in rural.
Like eleven, like ten or eleven?
It's eleven, eleven, ten.
Eleven o'clock.
Yeah, I'll get the times, yeah, it's very early.
It's ten, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
But it is a Cohasset, so uh, you know, pop the tuck in the oven, go cheer on Cohasset and then uh go back and have dinner.
We're going to the Red Lion.
There you go, the Red Lion, what do they call it, Red Lion in Tavern, okay. Alright, Selectmen comment, Jack, anything?
Um, I I just, I sent everybody the form to fill out, you know, we we had the issues of facilitation the other day for the Selectmen, I sent out a very long email and I attached the form that we used, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to help. I'll fill mine out tonight or tomorrow and show you how I did it and you can pretty much copy it. Then I, and I just suggest everybody share them around and we can edit.
If I could suggest maybe sending them to Tracy, and then when everything's in one place, I mean, you can send them along to share yours as a, as sort of a template.
Yeah.
But then send them to Tracy and then when all five are in, I'll have, we'll have Tracy upload them on the one drive and then send them to everybody, yep.
Send it one big piece of. Good.
Okay, um, Paul?
Um, yeah, so I wanted to uh recognize one of the police officers in town, uh Paul Wilson, about two years ago, he was at the health fair, uh held up at the school and at that time, Norfolk District Attorney, uh Mike Morrissey's uh team was there and they had the nasal Narcan Administration, they had an exhibit that was there. He um he approached uh me and through him and through the, our Board of Selectmen, through the Town uh Chief of Police, State Senator, State Representative, um South Shore Hospital supplied Narcan for the South Shore First Responders. It's gone, at this point, uh South Shore has distributed at uh no cost through the Grayken, Grayken Foundation, through Boston University, who he lives in town. Um the money is available for free Narcan distribution, so um a tiny little thing that was two years ago took off and it basically has dropped in our opioid deaths in this, the Commonwealth, um using this simple little mechanism, um so I wanted to thank um his kind of uh insight when he saw that, he thought it was a good idea and um I'm delighted with the results.
So is the foundation supporting Nar- free Narcan throughout the Commonwealth or just the South Shore?
Well, I know they, they gave a grant to South Shore Hospital, I'm not sure where else they did it, but they're, they're up at BU, so they give a tremendous amount of money to BU for their
Yeah.
addiction and um addiction, abuse and um and basically homeless uh problems uh through BU, so BU is is running a lot of the programs there.
So if somebody from outside the town hears about this, they should contact BU, is that how they should get?
Uh BU is the, is kind of the umbrella organization that's running most of the um, most of the grants from the Grayken Foundation, yeah.
Okay.
Fabulous. Kevin, anything?
Uh Veterans Day was another great day in town, but we celebrated, the whole town, they celebrated uh Veterans Day, uh kudos to the American Legion and to Phil Mahoney, who our Veteran Service Officer, who organized it, um it was really a beautiful, great day, we had a high school student who sang the National Anthem, it was really very well done. Uh three students, third graders, read poems or winning essays, which was very well received, uh there was a great collation and there was a good number of people showed up uh all around, on, it was really a special day, the the weather was great, but it's just uh only in Cohasset is seeing, or or we're a very special town for holding the Memorial Day activities and and the Veterans Day, which I recommend anyone make if they can next year, it's a, it is a beautiful ceremony with nice food afterwards and so forth, so uh well done.
And we echo the thanks to Phil Mahoney for really wanting to step up the game on Veterans Day, so he did a great job and uh all the veterans, including Kevin, who participated. It was, it was a very nice day and the weather really helped for us too.
Beautiful, wow.
Uh it was, uh I, somebody said that it was nicer than Memorial Day this year.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Cause it was sunny.
It was a New England, yeah.
They're going that way, right.
It was great, it was a great day, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I was gonna thank Phil, who has done a tremendous job and I'm sorry that I missed everything, but I was at the two hundred and forty-third birthday party of the US Marine Corps. There were about twenty-five hundred people for seated lunch at the Boston Convention Center, I was one of about seventy-five women in the whole place. Um it was pretty exciting, so it was just a great weekend to honor those who serve, so thank everybody. That's all I have, we don't have a meeting until the twenty-seventh after Thanksgiving, so I'm sure everybody, no minutes, um is that because I've been derelict or?
No notes.
Leave any minutes?
Okay.
No, we had two meetings last night, I just haven't sent them, I mean, last week I haven't sent them too. Okay, good, done, great, alright, send them away, I'm on, uh you have someone in your plane a few days, um I have no topics reasonably, not reasonably anticipated, so I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, great, thanks.
Aye.